We're still working on Quinn.
She's holding back.
So Dennis started to talk about, before you got here Ben, about the changes in permitting with the DES and just what I'm thinking of it as we learn the outcome of the, bring it up, bring it up to him. Of the River Road North, that for, um, project. Thank him. We need to be starting on the permitting and remember that, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, just the westernly limits of the three point seven acre easement is actually this bold line, not that dotted line. And then here, just in right of way, is actually that line, not bold line, so just arrow.
No, the bold line is your, is, uh, is it right away? But right away is quite a bit long.
It's the easement limits right there. Like these two over.
Does this say right away?
The right of way, that's the easement limits.
Right, but your right of way and your road is only thirty-three feet.
And this is the road here. The road goes from here to here.
Right, when you have a shoulder, you have a ditch line, so this is the actual outside of the right of way for the road. The road's only twenty feet wide, the right of way is thirty-three feet wide.
Is there any way you could give an inset where we blow that up and explain it better?
Yeah.
It's, um.
It ends up, you're looking at lines and they're all right next to each other.
The, the deed for the easement appears to indicate that this east, this western easement property boundary or easement boundary is not the same as the easterly side of the road easement. But we can, we can check that.
This is the old road, you know?
I understand that.
That's the new road.
Yep.
So he was just indicating where he located the old road easement, uh, the old road right of way.
Right of way, yeah.
And that can't change, this is, that's where that stone wall is.
Well, because the lines is, that's hard to read on that map?
Yep.
It would be nice just to blow it up.
He needs to clarify, he needs to clarify this, he needs to clarify this, and this is definitely incorrect.
Yeah.
So, um.
And the true acreage amount.
And, and, yeah.
So what do you want, just an arrow pointing and?
Go ahead, Jude, you're the one who studied, and you know, this is your area of expertise, if you will, so.
I want him, this arrow is wrong.
Yeah, it doesn't point, it points at the old road and not at the.
Correct.
Okay.
And this dotted line, what this dotted line, which isn't indicated down here, it's a mileage line. This is, this is here and we're doing this, so he surveyed that and he's got some milages and distances, but this arrow should go, if this is the edge of the easement, that needs to go there. And then he can calculate what's within the easement. So we've got a three point seven acre easement, which is in the deed. And then he's saying here the actual area of east of the two rod River Road layout, he has three point six acres. So we've got a difference between the deed and what he's calculated, I want him to run that calculation again to make sure, but this arrow is, is the main sticking point. And then he needs to, as, as Ben said, he needs to have a blow up or something so that it's really, really clear what he's talking about and what he's pointing to. Because is the westerly edge of the easement the same as the easterly side of the road?
I would think it would have to be.
Well, you might think it, but he needs to, he needs to tell us for sure, because otherwise he needs another note that indicates that really clearly. We don't ever wanna have to question in the future what exactly we have and where it is laid out.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
That's like down here, this shows this bend in the road and bend is not there.
Well then, let's get one that's right.
Well, he took that off the engineering plan, that she, she gave him the survey points, he gave her back an engineering plan that showed a number of issues, um, that aren't there.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's sort of a moving target with, with plans, but.
Believe me, we know all about them.
I know you do. What, we get recorded, we'd really like to have the, what's actually there.
I'll go up and read with him and make sure that we get those notes straight.
That'd be awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
It'll be the first part of the week, but by the end of the week, I'll, end of next week, I'll have a video.
Okay, go to Dina, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dennis.
That's it?
That's it.
Cool.
Thank you. Thanks for swinging by.
Try.
Okay, Steve, while we run through your list.
It's a quick and easy one.
Bye guys.
Drop off the different paving options from R and D.
Come on up here.
Is that, I don't, I don't prefer to be video recorded, I know that.
That's your choice.
I know they have a legal right to, but I'll sit here because I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
I just have one comment on the video, it should record the audience as well. That's the whole meeting.
Some questions?
I said the video should record the audience as well. Because you're part of the meeting.
Then I'll have to set it up.
You can set it up wherever you like.
Okay. And if, you want me to do it now?
Yeah.
Uh, like I said, I don't, I know legally they have a right to, but I don't prefer to be videoed, I didn't set up the.
Why don't you wait till Steve?
A movie star.
Until Steve is out and they'll recognize his voice, so that's not a problem.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, go ahead.
Um, I got three different options from R and D on, they're kinda trying to help us approach River Road South. Try to fix it for what we have for money. The cheapest solution is still gonna cost two eighty-four, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, so we're gonna be about ten thousand short of, you know. The option I would like to do is the, that terrible rough flat that's terrible, and we already know from Borings what's there, nothing great. Uh, um, he says a lot of towns will take inch and a half, um, stone, lay it down, gate spread it before the grinder and incorporate it into the road, and then we pave over it, but that option's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So like I said, the cheapest option to get pavement on that road, and it's a good amount of pavement. But I have all the particulars in all these three different plans, and he's got three different situations we can go with. So I'll leave that with you and to think about it, we can talk about it, and, um, the only thing is if, if we wanna do the entire River Road South, the cheapest option's two eighty-four, so maybe if I made an amendment at town meeting to try and raise the other ten.
The extra ten?
Um. Type one second. I had my note. Where did we roll up to, Dina? You, I got it back here. It was close to that.
It was very close to that. It was two eighty-seven.
He says it's, it really may not cost two eighty-four because he could, he says if we want, he's got this scenario in here. We could thin out Baker Hill a little bit and get some tonnage from Baker, move to River Road. You know, that's, that's another option too. So, but, but like I said, I'll leave these with you to go over all the particulars.
This is important, because what I want to make sure basically is that I'm remembering correctly, and I, I think Dina's right, that we've got enough to cover the, let's call it the low cost solution. But I just need to find my low cost. So Dina had calculated the remaining in the paved road fund. And so it's a combination of one fifty-four plus one hundred, which is two seventy-four. Excuse me, one fifty-four.
Right.
Plus one hundred is two fifty-four, plus thirty-seven is what's in my head.
And where did the thirty-seven come from?
Pay road.
Oh, okay.
So that's, all I gotta do is find.
Find that section.
Dina actually thinks something's not right. We're close though, Steve, I guess it's five yards.
Yeah, I think, I think.
And option, I'll, like I said, I'll leave this with you. Option one, he does have a grinding option in there. I've, I've gotta provide the stone, which is not gonna be that much stone, but you know which flat I'm talking about, right Kevin, on River Road South? It's twenty-eight hundred feet long, and it's between mailbox one thirty-nine and I think one ninety-two, um, or one ninety-six, but there's a, the, the flat there that's really terrible.
I, I mean, I got a pretty good idea, not, I mean, not like door to door.
On a, um.
Oh, that's not in there, no.
It's not in there.
The paved road fund is a, is a separate one that was done, um, with a a five-year help date, and this is the last year we're gonna use it.
Hell, you use it.
All right.
I don't think I brought my things. Wait.
Are you gonna save me just in time?
Yeah, twenty-seven, two, two, five.
So twenty-seven, two, two, five.
Yeah.
Give me one, Dorchester, one fifty-four.
Dorchester? Oh, that one, yeah, one fifty-four, six, two, five. I don't have that. Oh, it's, I do, it's in here.
There's a one.
Yep.
Plus an estimated one hundred for block grant, which has always been.
One fifty-four, six, two, five.
Six, two, five. Okay, so.
You know how I like to be right?
One fifty-four, six, two, five, one hundred plus, we know we get a little bit more usually, twenty-seven, two, two, five for the block grant. Seven, two, two, five plus, two eighty-one. Eight fifty. So the reason for going through this exercise was to basically decide whether or not we needed to ask for any additional money to be added into the budget to complete what we had prioritized for River Road South. Sounds like.
Would be okay.
Will be okay.
I suspect that the block, block, uh, block grant.
Will be a little more.
Will be a little bit more than a hundred, that's right.
But like I said, I'll leave it, because grinding, he does actually have grinding in all these options.
Even the low cost?
Yes, he does, so, well, I would have to buy the stone, but that stone's gonna be a miniscule amount, that's not gonna be a big deal.
Okay, um, you don't necessarily have to leave them with us, Steve, I think.
Well, like, yeah, but I just, I mean, I, I know which one I'm gonna choose, it's probably the cheaper one, but, uh, I, I mean, there's different thicknesses, there's different materials, you know, and.
Why don't you hold on to them and come back next week and give us your recommendation?
Okay, um.
Just as long as it doesn't go over two eighty-one, eight fifty.
One more question, any idea, I know you were talking with the, um, bridge people, I'd like to obviously do the paving when the bridge is done, is the bridge. It'd be ideal if we do it when the bridge is done.
Yeah, that would be ideal, so what, um, the way Mr. Hanson left it, I think it would be clearer for him once the other town meetings finish.
Right.
Is that he had, he's basically booked for all of the summer, for the construction season for two thousand and twenty. What he, how he left it with me, since he had left us this one spot and we kept pushing him because we didn't finish the bypass, was he'll do his best to squeeze us in, but he didn't tell me when. So I think we're basically, um, sort of at his scheduling, but he did say that he's got some towns that are waiting to see if they've got the money to do all the work that he's got scheduled, to see if anything falls out, so I think after next week, we'll be able to get in touch with them and see if anybody dropped out where we did.
Unless if you talk to him, if he can kind of assure me that there won't be any damage to our asphalt at his butt joints and stuff, if he can assure me there won't be any, we could still pave it, but, I mean, if he's gonna have a crane in there.
Or, or, or we wait, you know, we just try to, we, we try to wait as far as we can, you know.
Well, the only problem is these guys are, obviously are filling their schedule.
Sure.
So I have to, I have to give them a, kind of a, an answer.
So we'll just have to decide what, where our priority is. Get the bridge installed, pave, or fit into the paver schedule and live with what happens with the.
Or, or just pave and I could maybe stop to each side of the bridge. I mean, it wouldn't look beautiful, but I could stop a couple of truck lengths from each side of it if he thinks there's gonna be damage there and.
Well, let's keep working, and, and after next week, I'll get ahold of Mr. Hanson and see what he looks like, what his schedule looks like, and maybe something dropped out and he can pencil us in so that'll work for us, okay?
Yeah.
Let me just take a note. So while you're here, Steve, anything else?
Only, we're still, that's, obviously that truck schedule's still a work in progress, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll talk about that another day.
Well, and we can.
Right.
But let me just ask, so I've got, so this is what I, when I talk about fleet rationalization, right, so I've tried to sketch out the fleet, if you will. So right now, we've got, maybe I call them operable? Three five-ton trucks plus the Sterling, or?
We have, right now, we have four or five tons. Uh, three of them work, one of them is a spare.
That's sort of what I call them operable, okay. So that, I, I, I felt like after I had written this, that I was missing one, so I'm gonna call it six plus, is the Sterling the spare?
Yes.
Is Sterling, we only have one Sterling?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of these trucks that are kept and are spare and they're extra, just aren't on the schedule.
Yeah, well, so that's exactly where I'm headed.
They should be.
Well, that's why we need to talk. That, that's really, because right now, if you look at what we've done for the CRF funding, is basically, we've got, this is on the, so I call it on the replacement schedule, so we've got basically two big trucks, two small trucks on the replacement schedule. But in green, what I've tried to indicate is that all the way through, when you have two, basically, big, let's just talk to big trucks for now, two big trucks on the replacement schedule, and I sketched out, and we can always talk about the life, right? We can, we can keep discussing that, but what's important, I think, right now is conceptually, with the size of our crew, plus our contract help, having these four, but if we look at just the two big trucks, what, what I've sensed is that, you know, you're, wanna keep a spare, and so I've sort of factored that in, that when it comes time for, so we got the new truck that we're gonna be looking for funding this year, we got the thirteen replaced in twenty-five, well then in twenty-five, you've got the opportunity to decide, how much do I like this thirteen? And if you decide that you like that thirteen, it can then become the spare, and then, is, excuse me, as you work your way out in two thousand thirty-two, you take a look at your two thousand twenty and say, am I still liking it, and then it becomes the spare, and so I don't have a.
The problem in doing that is then, the oldest truck that you keep or the spare is twenty years old before you get rid of it.
I know.
I mean, the, the truck I'm replacing this year is sixteen years old, it's a two thousand four, and the problem is what I've been preaching for years is we're, we're keeping these trucks too long, we need to shorten up, but keeping a five, uh, one ton or five fifty more than five years is kinda crazy. The, the, the big trucks, most towns do seven, ten years tops, keeping these trucks this long, it's, it's not financially prudent.
Yeah. So I, I, I did leave that life, 'cause I knew that was something we wanted to talk about, and I think it gets to a, um, sort of a business decision of you've got the life of the truck, how much money you put into the truck to keep it operable, so it's really functional. And then, as we, as we're learning, as we keep these trucks for their almost entire life, if you use them.
It is, they're.
They, they end up, they end up not having a tremendous amount of value.
Four thousand dollars for the two thousand four Sterling.
Right, right, so we're, you know, it's probably almost worth that much just to steal. I didn't wanna say scrap, but someone might buy it. But it, but it's, you know, it's an operable machine, I mean, you know, so. So, so, so I, I get it, is that, you know, it's a decision on, is it better to run them? Spend the money to keep them on the road, run them for the full life, and then understand that at the end of their life, they bring us very little value compared to what you paid for, or you shorten up the replacement life and spend less money on maintenance at the tail end of the life, and then when you go to trade or sell, um, whatever works, you're still able to extract, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars. So we, we need to learn that, and so the other towns, I think it would be good for us to research for the towns that replace more frequently, is to go see what they're getting to give us a, a feel for, you know, what that looks like, 'cause that'll help drive that decision.
I've got a small, I mean, I've talked with Orford, there's a seven years.
Yep.
And they're big trucks, they're almost identical trucks tires, same body, plows, everything.
Yep.
They're getting, you know, they'll sell them outright usually, and they'll try and get thirty to forty thousand for them.
Right.
At seven years?
Yes. Another thing Kevin, that we have to contemplate too is, you know, we're not in the winter in full-time, we're not at five and a half guys anymore. My trucks are three full-time guys, I have to have dependable trucks. When I have one truck that goes down, not only does it take the truck out of the equation, it probably has somebody to help me fix it too. So to have the downtime now is what I cannot afford at all.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, when you're running, you're optimized, if you will, with your trucks and people.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you just a time thing, our routes before, one of the people we had was two and a half hours to do a complete route. Now a complete plow cleanup's taking me six hours. So like I said, I'm not even, I can't even conform to the snow removal policy. So, that's my, that's why, that's why I'm just.
If it snows, if it snows more than two inches in, in, in four or six hours.
Well, some of these, some of these are kinda ridiculous, I need to be honest, with these two and a half hours, some of these routes have to be plowed, I mean, really? But anyway, we'll talk about that another day.
That's pretty tremendous service to be able to do that every two and a half hours. Okay, well, now you can, you know, I wanted to be able to talk off of the board, if you will, that's why I've left it up there. And that's the whole idea, is for us to try to talk about it and get alignment, to figure out what works best. But when I talk about the fleet ra, rationalization, you know, that's sort of what I've got in mind, is trying to basically match the fleet with the manpower, if you will, exactly.
I just think, you know, of course, once if you took that third truck out, it's, it's so hard to get it back, I think in the long run, you're gonna save money, and it's gonna be better off to keep that third big truck in the schedule and to try to shorten up, even with a five fifty, try to shorten these lifespans on them that we're, that we're getting out of them, because it's, uh.
Well, the five fifty's sort of new territory for us, really, I mean, really, you've got.
I think two thousand ten, I think, was our first four fifty or five fifty.
That's, well, the ten is the sprayer, the one without a wing, right? So you're right, so that's our, you know, one of our first.
That's our first.
But it didn't quite see as much work, 'cause it wasn't running the wing.
Right.
And you're using, I guess, you know, using more, like the sixteen, you know, that's getting a lot of use, and so as the years go on, we're gonna learn whether that truck really can last ten years.
And that's another thing I was, like I was, why I was bringing up the timeframe of the, of the routes, the, the trucks we do have now, obviously are getting a lot more hours on them. They're getting a lot, you know, rather than a two and a half to three hour route that's now is doing almost six hours, I'm, you know, these trucks are getting doubled up on their usage. So that's another thing you kinda have to contemplate.
We're getting, uh, data back from reducing to three man. We can review based on the outcome of this year, uh, whether that's a decision we wanna make going forward.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you're right. I think the way I've sort of, just big picture, go to the slide that I showed, the second slide.
It's all mathematics, but lots of variables.
Well, exactly, but, and, and so if you look at the road projects going out, and if we stick to our, um, sort of, you know, once we get, we got a big hurdle to get past, and that's River Road and North thatford. If, if our plans don't bring in another big project like that, and we can stick to the pavement preservation, stick to the replacements of the culverts, stick to the, you know, finishing up some of the work that we've gotta do, manage our projects with both block grant and then, if we're able to, I guess the best words I could use, skinny down a little bit what's going into the roads, if we need to put more than four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into the capital reserve because we either brought forward the replacement or put the third truck back in, what I'm trying to say is we're sort of like this, I hope you don't mind my analogy, when the, uh, when the snake eats the, eats the mouse or whatever it does and then it goes through the snake, you can kinda watch it go through, and so we're, we're in that phase, of that fat phase of funding with respect to road projects, so once we get through that fat funding, heavy funding of, um, road projects, if we have to adjust on the CRF side, we'll be able to basically keep working towards maintaining that three to three point two million dollar total appropriation.
Oh, we definitely gotta, uh, we should be looking at prioritizing the road.
Sure.
Present.
Preservation.
Preservation, that's what you're calling it, but redoing the paved roads.
Yeah, yeah.
And then just to, like, just so you don't think you're throwing your money away on this pavement, that pavement guy said that he's amazed at how remarkable River Road North and South is compared to some towns he sees, and I told him, I said, we, I think it was ninety-seven or ninety-eight when I started, that we put a full, complete, normal course on like River Road North and South, and it, over the years, we've skin coated it here and there, but it hasn't had like a normal, proper, decent paving since ninety-seven, ninety-eight, so, he said to get that life out of that.
Twenty-five years?
Said it's, it's, he said most typical towns, ten, twelve years, you wanna talk about resurfacing, said so to get what you got out of that, it's, it's amazing.
Good. Um, yeah, good. So before you go, we did get feedback, I guess somewhat from Little Town.
That was, yeah, I was there, I'm on the, on the equipment rotation.
No, no. No, it was more on, it was more on just the roads.
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard what he said about, and he's right, you know, infrastructure.
Well, that's, that's the point of having some prioritizing going forward.
Well, it's on, it's on the schedule though, the River Road North's on the schedule.
It is.
Next year, hopefully.
Well, Market Street was also brought up.
Market Street was brought up, and then Goose Pond, we heard about after, I think.
The, the only thing, I've just been thinking Goose Pond, it's gonna be a while, you know, that's, I know it's on our five-year schedule, um, I don't, I can't remember if we spent it or reallocated it somewhere else, but I did have thirteen thousand dollars left, because I didn't put that two inches of hard pack on last year's section that Knott's did. And if that's still, if we still have that somewhere, I could, the R and D's gonna be in town, I could, I gotta replace a couple culverts on the hill, but I could have them put a coat over what we call Martin Hughes Hill to appease people for a few years. And like the guy said, it's not, it's not a waste one, and that material gets ground in, the asphalt or whatever we do with it, when we do it, it's not a waste. It's solid, good material, it's gonna be there, you know, it may, that may be enough to, to, to put a coat on that hill.
So hold that thought, Steve, I, so this, that plays a little bit, Dean, I think, too. I'm just gonna show Dina so she can see it, but then you guys can take a look at it. You know, we, we went and, um, last year, remember we had everything up on the board, we had all this.
Yeah, we might, that's what I've seen, we might.
And so we got, 'cause even though you saved money on that project, um, we maybe have allocated it for, well, for finishing up, um, top coating River Road, for top coating Baker, for, you know. Right, so we need to, we need to, um, finish those projects probably before we got a clear view on how much was left over. But it, I, I hear you, what you're saying, and ideally, of course, if, um, if, if R and D, if R and D was here, but that's, it's, hold that thought, Steve, we'll keep working it.
Yeah, and I talked with Alan Rowell too, and he says that he could help us, you know, we could gradish in that, you know, dump, spread some loads and just, you know, take the meanness out of it, just buy us a little time.
Just so I'm, got my, uh, topography right. Hughes Hill, so you come on, you're going down, and then where it splits with Renee and Goose Pond Road, that hill right there.
Yes.
And so, um, obviously now, I mean, it's all over the place, 'cause of all the heaves.
It's unfortunate, you couldn't do the Dorchester Road that long as it is.
Yeah, the Dorchester.
That thing's a beast.
It's mean.
So anyways, that's what yours is about, is, yeah, does it settle down after?
It'll get better, but I don't recall here I've seen it quite this bad, and once the pavement gets to a certain point that it is, there's so much moisture going through there, the more salt we have to use to bear it, doesn't help, I try to cut the salt way back, which I have, but, um, still.
Oh, Dorchester Road is the worst.
Yeah, I've, I can't ever remember seeing it that bad either.
You guys gotta drive over with those trucks, and it must be.
Five miles an hour.
I have no idea, I mean, I, I just, 'cause I drove up yesterday just to take a, a look, you know, just up to the top of the hill to where we started the, the work we did last year, and I was just like, oh my goodness, I mean, there's, there's places where it's just like, woo, and then the next, it's over, so I was thinking about, you know, from a truck plowing perspective, right?
Oh, state's filling in their potholes with that hole pack, trying to soften it.
But I think from, from the Goose Pond Road, um, from people, from the perspective of people who live on that road, they're just sick of it not being finished, that's part of the issue. It was a three-phase project, it started however long ago, and they're living on a dirt road, and they bought a house on a paved road, and they want it done. That's the message I got yesterday from, reading. It's not necessarily because Hughes Hill is so bumpy this year, it's because they're sick of the dust in their house, they're sick of the repairs to their vehicles, because it's not a paved road anymore, period, so.
Well, we'll start you with that argument from basically here on out, I think, whether it's this road or other roads.
Yep.
It's fair, it's fair enough, but.
They've all, they've all been let go.
But you gotta, you gotta kinda go back to where we positioned ourselves by saying that we were going to be slowing down on some of the major road work, to, to be fair.
Well, we diverted a lot of the money that would've gone to that.
You're right, that, that's, well, to, to big projects.
Yeah.
You're right.
And that's the, that's been the.
And that's, and that's sort of the rub, if you will.
It is the rub.
But we are, our goal is to address our existing town road as a priority, rather than major road projects.
And the message, um. And the message, um the message, or there should be a message to the Goose Pond Road people. Maybe, you know.
I'll get to that, I'll get to that.
Your plan is.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll get to that in a, in a few minutes, Deana, but thanks. Let me just ask the board this. Is the message strong enough? When you look at our total appropriations that we've been basically working so hard with, is the message strong enough that we ask for two hundred thousand dollars more? Bring our total appropriations up to the same as last year to achieve more Goose Pond Road, for example? It's a question.
I had a, I don't know if this helps you, but I had a preliminary figure from a contractor who just gave me some ideas and kind of similar what we've done on the rest of that road. And he thought, he thought the flat was fine, it didn't really need to do much, you know? But he thought the hill, the five culverts, head walls, precast and drainage and all that stuff. He thought it could, and I think, I can't remember if he was counting pavement, probably not, but I, I, he, I think he talked in a hundred seventy-four range.
Right, to make it ready.
And I I would think we could do it for less, that, that whole section last year we did for that or less.
Right.
So I would think we could do it for less, less than that. Then, like I said, though, the problem is that I will, that hill is just like Baker Hill. I would never leave that hill gravel for a year, it's a school bus route, it's hard enough to keep it there as it is. That's the thing we gotta think about when.
Yeah, when we do it, you gotta do both.
Right, and then that's the thing that you gotta, you'd wanna come up with enough money to pay that entire thing that we've already done while they're there. You know, the hill, everything, wouldn't make much sense to have them come and just pave the hill. And then, you gotta do what you got for money, but.
That's another project, maybe.
That's kind of, that's on our schedule, that's on our five year schedule to repurpose that hill, redo the hill.
Right.
But I I don't really think that the the dirt section is really much to complain about it, that's really not that bad a shape. And I can't count the gallons of chlorine that gets dumped on it.
Right.
You know, um.
Yeah, so I think we're making good efforts to try to.
To alleviate some suffering, I mean, it's.
Yeah, wow.
It's it's high, it's it's high speed, but.
If, yeah, it's a high-traffic road, so I I understand that part. Okay, board, I asked a question, what are your thoughts? I, I mean, in a way, this is, this is, you could view it as sort of, I don't wanna, an opportunity in the fact that we rolled in two hundred thousand dollars less. We had an unusual year last year to have the total town valuations go down slightly. We know that on average, we go about up about one percent. And so where I'm headed is, and we also will learn tonight, um, dependent on the school budget, that they're coming in under what they did last year. So if there was ever a year, if you will, to have this three-quarters of the way through the process, if you will, maybe nine-tenths the way through the process, the budget process, I mean. It's, it's, it's still mechanically doable, it's less, you know, we've got that ten percent rule for the budget committee. You know, that by the statutory aspect of what, can't come in and ask for twelve percent more.
Yeah, I, that's what I just looked up, the ten percent rule, so it's the total amount recommended by the budget committee. So that would include the warrant articles in the operating budget and the capital reserve funds, so they're piece of it.
Right, 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 three million, there's three hundred thousand.
I think it's right here.
No, I, yes.
For the ten percent, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Well, I know it's a little bit less.
One hundred and thirty-six thousand, zero, eighty-eight. I rounded it as best I can.
So, you know, there's not, there, mechanically, it's doable. Obviously, it's very late in the budgeting game to be doing it five days before.
Yeah, I would like not to make that decision right at this moment if we're going to seriously consider.
But if we're gonna do it, it's got, we almost have to decide now because we need to have it, offer it up, if you will, for for town meeting, if it's gonna, if we postpone it, then it, obviously, we don't meet till next Thursday.
We can meet before next Thursday.
Oh, I see.
Ah, if you need to, you certainly can.
I see what you're driving to, so you wanna think about it.
And we have school meeting tonight, which could factor in.
Yep.
Where we're going, and it just, to me, it seems proven that we've addressed, we've looked at this issue before and come down on not asking for the extra two hundred thousand.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with where you, what you're saying, I asked your opinion, so that's what I'm.
There you go, that's what you got.
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
I don't wanna say yes or no at this point, and if we're seriously gonna consider doing it, we should give it a couple of days consideration, figure out what happens tonight, and relook at it.
Realistically, it would be Monday.
Probably, probably.
Ben, your thoughts?
I'll go along with Judy, and I'm not opposed to doing, I, I keep, you know, the maintaining and finishing projects are are important. That one's been open forever. I mean, I don't know what year that was started, the Goose Pond thing.
Six, seven years ago.
Seven years ago.
Somewhere in there.
That's a long time.
So you want, so you're basically saying you wanna have a think on it?
Yeah, and then, and 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 whether we address the hill separately or just, you know, get some of the paving done over the pieces that's been open for so long.
Well, the other thought would be is that we could.
Because that's the easiest thing to do.
Yeah, we could, we could um also just put up to, and I'm, I'm sticking to, you know, if I was to do it, I'm sticking to the two hundred
Two hundred.
because I wanna stay flat till last year. The two hundred could basically just go into, you know, reserve, if you will, for that project.
Or for paving.
Well, yeah, you know, wherever, wherever, right? So there could be the paving, or it could be, you know, you could be for Goose Pond Road to, for working to save up enough to do Goose Pond Road de-completion. That being the reconstruction, what has to happen, and simultaneously, the finished paving, where we get part of it this year and part of it next year or the next year.
I think I saw it on the schedule for twenty-three, was that when it was?
Right, but we probably don't have enough money.
In twenty-three.
Right.
Goose Pond, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Right. Okay, so what I'm hearing is that you want a new, a day to think about it, fair enough. And then what I'd ask for you, if, if you're moving more towards increasing the budget by two hundred to four hundred, whatever Deana's number was, I highly recommend we stay below two hundred. That you send an email to Deana tomorrow, and then if I get if I basically hear back from you guys and you say no thank you, we're gonna leave it as it is, then we don't need a special meeting.
Right.
If I, if, if Deana hears back for it and, you know, gives me feedback that um one of you would like to have a meeting on Monday, is Monday doable for all of us?
Well, let's have a look, Steve.
It doesn't have to be the law.
Yeah, Monday morning I could do.
So Steve, just for your reference, right now, we've got, right now, we've got four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in twenty-two and twenty-three. But, but, and so we might have to think about how we, so you got Goose Pond Road, Hughes Hill, we, we, from your recommendation, two seventy-four and paved Goose Pond Road two hundred. So we've just gotta be careful that we kind of do both things, like you said, that you don't end up where you end up with something that's not.
Right.
Plowable, so.
Right, the hill, the hill would definitely have to be repaved, the rest could wait.
So I don't know if that Goose Pond Hill, the number we put of two seventy-four that you had, so you get, if that um included paving.
I'm sure it didn't, I don't think it did.
So, okay. Do you see where we're conflicted?
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, okay, so what, where I was at, is that if if it's an option, if you think, if either Ben or Judy, Deana, if they think it's a good option to consider, then we could schedule for Monday sometime for a special meeting to decide.
In the morning.
In the morning, okay.
And you do it in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay, so nine o'clock Monday morning, if we need it, decision to be made Friday, so that Deana has time to warm the meeting. Maybe Friday by noon. I don't, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have the answer, right? I don't, I haven't, yeah, I wanna think about it a little bit, too. Um, all I'm trying to articulate is, is that this would be the one year where we could do it and still achieve what we said we were gonna do. But it is very late. Uh, I'm not sure what the impact would be to the town, to the budget committee as far as, you know, their feedback and input, I mean, we run a bit of a risk there. But if it's still, if you decide that it's the right thing to do, then we'll just have to work our way through that, okay? Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, um, go ahead, Steve.
Like I, like I said, if, if the worst-case scenario for Goose Pond, if I can find ten and twelve grand to mend the hill to buy us some time, every road's negotiable if you slow down, depends on how fast people wanna travel. If they declare a road, it's untravelable or unsafe, you know, Goose Pond speeds, I mean.
No one's gonna go too fast down the hill now.
No, but it's, you know.
Or up.
No, but it's, you know, you could go on any road if you gotta, if you go the right speed. And just one thing, I just didn't wanna forget this point on, when you, and you talked about Little Town meeting about posting the schedule of all of our equipment and stuff, I just wanted to put a reminder now, one comment was about the constant barrage of equipment that we've seen of that lately. The reason for that is, you probably don't remember, but in the great two thousand seven, eight recession, we put everything off, from the loader, backhoe, trucks, to greater, everything was, we put a little money in to fix it, and it was all bumped back at least five years, some of it longer. So we bought everything a lot of extra time, that's why everything seems like all at once that it's accumulating, which it does seem that way, but that's that's one of the reasons.
Yeah, the other thing I've got, I thought you needed to help remind you that, is that we should slap draft on top of that.
Or work in progress.
Whatever, whatever you want.
Yeah.
Because we were asked to post it, and so I think um fairly, we should, you know, say work in progress or draft, you know how you got the little watermark of draft?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that'd be best.
Yeah, because it is fluid, it's.
It's, exactly. Well, based on what we talked about earlier. Until we're aligned, then I want it to stay draft form so that we're in agreement, okay? All righty, anything else for Steve, Steve, anything?
I don't have anything, it's depressing, I can think of, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Good work, good discussion. Okay, so I think next on the agenda was, David's at, what time?
He's at nine-thirty, because you were gonna have a comment at ten.
Okay, David, come on in.
Yeah, it's nine-thirty.
Sounds good to me. Somewhere. Okay.
Yeah.
Sir. So I don't have a whole lot, um, the planning board has been uh dealing with getting ready for town meeting, Little Town meeting. The uh couple of issues, not issues, but um things are coming up. They're going to be looking at a lot line adjustment next week for David Robey, seems very simple, I don't see any issues with it, and then.
That's already been to them before.
Um.
January, they were looking at a preliminary on the David Robey.
Yeah, I, I passed it out to them, but this is the actual, gonna be the actual hearing.
Right, okay.
Um, and then Crossroads is uh going forward with their plans for the middle school. They're going to the, they went to the Conservation Commission last night, no, not, that's, no, sorry, Monday night. Sorry, I think it's Tuesday. So they went Monday night uh for some wetlands um intrusions for the middle school. Uh, there's, where they're gonna cut their new driveway in is going to be part of what's considered steep slopes, so they have to have the planning board review that. They're gonna do that at next week's meeting. And then their, their plan is to go to the zoning board for the nineteenth for special exceptions for those intrusions. I'm still a little hesitant, I'm, I'm very happy with their plan for changing easement, I think it's an excellent plan. But the old easement is still in place, and I'm not sure, so I need to probably talk to town council to see if the board can give an approval with that easement still in place, or if you can do it conditionally. And I'm not sure what the, the select board would like to.
Yeah, I think your thoughts are good.
I thought at the last meeting, yeah, you guys decided that needed to be addressed before any final.
We said that we, that's what we said, um.
That's, I, what I, like, I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading the board correctly on that, and that.
I think it's very doable, that you can, you can conditionally sign the new one, then when the other one goes away, then you'll be signed, so.
But if he wants to talk to council, make sure that the process is good.
All right, I think that's, you know, I, I have no.
I think that's.
So I just wanna make sure that I'm not going to, if the board's not gonna be unhappy with me for bringing it up, that, that, you know, pretty much with the zoning board asking them to make it conditional on the new easement.
Yep.
Being signed by the select board.
Yep.
Sounds good, sounds good, David.
Yeah, so you just need a note to remember if, when everything is completed, we check to make sure that there's been avoiding and then an update of all the signatures or all the plans.
Yeah. Okay, so, good.
And other than that, I have really nothing, slow time of the year.
Good thing you came in at nine-thirty.
Absolutely.
So while David's here, just to address something that popped in this morning, and I, I wanted to catch it at the beginning of the meeting, but since we had some early morning guests. Um, so David volunteered, if you will, today, there's, you know, more discussion going down with Margaret with um the, on the E and D side of how we respond to um the virus. And I guess the message, David, is, is just sort of hold tight for now, thank you for offering. We've got the team that, you know, is sort of spelled out in the letter here. You know, our involvement as a board, mostly, as I described it, to this team is from a, as from a, a select board perspective, is from a financial aspect and then also from a um legal aspect, to try to make sure that we're aware of what's going on. And then secondarily, my position as the deputy E and D obviously keeps me heavily involved, it's actually turned out to be where time and and meetings and phone conferences and listening in is starting to take more and more, more and more time. With that said, you need to keep in mind who the um deputy, if you will, or vice chair is. I don't know, for this and that, you know, if it starts to get where I'm really, really busy, it might end up where you're a two-person board at some point in time, that could happen. Um, but what I was wanting David to hear, just so I didn't have to send an email, is hold tight for now, because this team, as it gets organized, since it's a little bit outside of our normal response um members, you know, we've got some of our standard members, you know, Bill Wast on the information side, we've got our, you know, health providers on that, and some of the other things that we would normally have with um emergency services, if you will, but there's other players that are getting involved. So right now, we're doing a little bit of what I call storming and forming to make sure that the roles and responsibilities are falling in place. We're gonna have a phone call at, at um, to one o'clock with another group of people that are trying to manage for the whole Upper Valley. So we've got, you know, we've got the state response with respect to our emergency management, we've got the state health department, you know, that are working down this chain, and now we've got the Upper Valley um group that's gonna have a conference call at one. And we've also got, if you go to anyone's website, you go to the Dartmouth website, they've, they've cranked up their emergency response and how they're organized and things they've gotta do, very well done, by the way. And same, same for Hanover, and then on their website, they've got things populated, so one of the requests this morning, it was for David to maybe populate some stuff onto our website. So where this is going is that I think right now, we've just gotta wait and see to make sure we're collectively getting the right information in the right place.
So.
Yes.
Um, I think if we made a place for it on the website, which David could do, and put the, the letter that the handout from Little Town meeting, and then something I was gonna mention later, but this is an appropriate time, on the list serve just a note that, go to the website if you have questions, we're beginning to. And then, something I was gonna mention later, but this is an appropriate time, on the listserv, just a note that, go to the website if you have questions, we're beginning to put information there.
Right. Could you put that video they played at Little Town Meeting on the website?
That was a great video.
There's a lot of, there's a lot, so just notice how you're coming up with all these ideas. There's all these groups coming up with all these ideas, and so Margaret and I are trying to get our arms around, when I said the storming and forming. So we're trying to, you know, form together so that we've got a cohesive, uh, but those are good ideas.
I, I passed on to the government Little Town Meeting, and I told them it was very good, that, I mean, they're wiping down all the great, all the chairs, wiping down the microphone.
And the school, the school has done, uh, they, they got, they've got their own, they spent a lot of time organizing and putting into place exactly things like that, so.
He wasn't very pleased with the, the position did what he did. I, I would, I would guess that it might be difficult for him to hold on to his job.
I did, I did, I did, I'm not sure I know what you mean, but anyways, um, what was I gonna say?
I do.
Oh, so, oh, no, no, so, um, Margaret on her website, on the town web page, has been populating, but the point is, is that unless you know it's there, you probably won't find it. And so Dina's position, actually our assistant to Dina's position, was the one that had the responsibility for pointing people from the listserv to our website. And I, and I can only assume that in that position's absence, that Dina's able to fill in as best she can, um, with doing that. So, I will, uh, mention that to Margaret and, and, and work with Dina, she's actually on our work team also, for things, for things like this. And, um, maybe, depending on Margaret's direction, is we will point people, you know, on the listserv either towards the town website or to Margaret's.
Right.
She, she's got every, everything that we just talked about, she's got basically populated in her.
Well, we don't need to recreate something, but we need to let people know where to go, and that shouldn't be overly.
That letter is already, it's two places on the website, all on the front page, so, you know, just to, if that brings up the, the website, and looks, they will see.
Got it, so, we're just gonna zip something out to the listserv, just reminds people to go there to find it.
If, if Margaret's ready, when she, when she's ready to do that.
And the video you.
It's not, it's not, I don't want it to be the, I don't, if, if we have it come from the select board, then we've got one more, sort of, um, I think our, our role right now, just to support what.
Yeah.
Margaret, it, it's really command and control, Margaret right now for this incident, she's the one, we're basically feeding in and supporting her.
Well, and in our meeting, that was the very, I think biggest thing that I took, the biggest thing that I took away, but, cause the importance of all this is very important, but, was that Margaret was very clear that anything that gets put out on the listserv, on the webpage, be cleared with her.
Exactly.
And I get it, cause you want.
It's all, it's all about what I call, uh, command and control. And, and it's, it's, she has to control the message, because otherwise, it can go all over the floor. Okay, okay.
So she's gonna get in touch with David to, or not, David's not involved?
Until we, until we need him. Cause I saw, there was a request this morning, back and, back and forth, between the librarian and, um, Margaret, and they were brainstorming, right? David kindly, cause he was getting, he's receiving an email, David, Dina, and David just said, you know, just let me know where I can help. So, so, so I'm just saying, until we figure out exactly what we want to do, hold tight, and then it'll be Margaret's decision on, on how we populate. Second, second part of the conversation is, I think we're, we've already got a practice of putting things on the listserv and pointing people to our website. We've done that in the past. We, we have, we, we said, you know, we, I think, I know I've seen in the past.
Oh yeah, we've said before, please, you know, check the website for whatever.
Cause they're down.
We haven't post, actually posted things on the website, I mean, on the listserv.
Right.
Recently at least. But, the reminder was started, like on a, I don't know what Patty was doing, either weekly or every other week. Saying, don't forget to check the website for new information.
Right.
Uh, don't forget, you can sign on and get all the notices, you know, we're trying to get people to get used to going to the webpage, not the listserv for information, the town's official communication that we pay money for.
Right. So let's just talk about that for a second, cause I, um, I know there's been some, some buzz about it. So I, me, I think we're, our, we've got in place what we need, we've been shorthanded, so it hasn't happened as often. And what I'm referring to is, is that if we have something that's urgent, like we're just talking about. If we have a change to a committee or board meeting scheduled, that people would not be aware of, I think working it through Dina, where she basically can put something on the listserv and points people to our webpage and says, "Select Board Meet, you know, has been rescheduled," for example, "Please see town webpage, boom," and, and have the link. Just, I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable, if you will, I think that conforms with where we're at.
That's a good idea.
Make, make it easy so they, while they're reading on the listserv, they just poke it and automatically go.
Right, have the link right there.
Have the link right there and have it automatically go to the website. And that's easy.
Well, it's easy, and, but see, that's why I've been, that's why I've been a little reluctant to really work this or work it too hard, is cause guess who we just loaded up?
Well, that's not loading up, that's fine.
Well.
I mean, it's easy, it's, I'm, I won't tell you where I'm coming from, so, you know, there comes a time when people. Hey, we'll do it, that's right, yes, it, there you go, Julie, thank you.
You know, you, you, if they have to go separately, that delay will begin up, so they're not.
Well, we want them to have it right on their browser, so they go right to it every day.
Well, I know, but training, training people.
The listserv is there.
We have a change of meetings, and that's what we did, that, that brought this all up.
Right.
Uh, just have the link right there, when they read the listserv, they poke the link and they're, they're on our webpage.
That's fair, I mean, cause unless you study, unless you study our homepage every day.
It is fair, but I do, I would love the board members, as they speak to people in the public, to say, "We have this great webpage, please join it," so that you will automatically get these notices, then they wouldn't even have to.
Right.
Go to the.
I didn't know that before.
Yes, that's what we've been saying.
I'm gonna help you out here, I'm gonna help you out here a little bit, I just signed up for it, six months ago.
So when David posts a meeting, there's an automatic notice that goes to anybody who has joined it.
Oh, I'll have to join it.
Exactly.
Okay. I'm glad this meeting's being taped, everybody join it.
Set the right example.
Sign up.
That's right.
I've, I've already had seven hundred and eighty-five messages from Dina this year.
He hates all my emails, I'm gonna send more, just to irritate him, I think.
Copy him on everything.
Okay, yeah. Double copy.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
I wouldn't know that, but my computer tells me how.
Thank you for your offering help.
No problem.
I'm sure we will utilize your services.
Oh, I'm sure he'll be busy with that kind of stuff, yeah.
Very nice.
But this will be good, I think this will help, the listserv.
Yes.
Reminder thing, yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, I have nothing else.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, Robey.
Thank you. Enjoy quiet in your office.
I have a question.
Excuse me. Ten, ten, we're ten, ten, we're almost getting back on schedule. My meeting, ma'am, you'll get in one second. Ten, ten, we're almost back on schedule, public comments.
You wanna, you wanna move your, uh.
If you insist, I will move it.
Yeah, I, I, what I'd like is, you know, I'm thinking about it while we're doing it, if we, if there is somebody doesn't want to get videoed, just have it so there's a chair in front of it, they can sit, or beside it.
Is that an option? This is a public meeting?
Yeah.
And if we're videotaping it?
Yeah, and people have a right to not be here to your table.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, so what was your question?
Okay, my question.
For David.
Um, is the planning board, I understand, asked for a map of the properties on Route Ten regarding Article Two?
Yeah, John asked for, yes, he did.
Did you develop that?
Uh, he did that.
And would, he developed?
I gave him a map that was already, had been part of the, uh, master plan. I believe that's working, I'd have to double check working, but he then blew it up and then drew in his own.
What, what's the request, so what, what do you need?
Well, we'd like a copy of it.
Give me about thirty seconds and I'll bring you a copy?
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Not a problem.
Okay, let me just shut this off for a second.
Go ahead, study it up.
Okay.
It'll take time. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Is it showing in the audience?
There's that, I said I can't wait till next week.
Oh, it can't?
No.
Okay, so.
The manifest can't, no. There's this one, um, this is the motor vehicle municipal money, um, two checks. I didn't send that in the thing, cause it's a whole separate thing. And then here's the manifest for this week.
See now, you wish you'd done your hair and your makeup.
I do my hair every day.
I see, I know, it's so good, I didn't get one of those.
Here you are.
I could, I want you to electronic copy that too.
I don't have electronic copies, I see. I see.
Oh, shoot.
Good, thank you.
Ambulances, do we, uh, I'm guessing, well, we don't know if those were skiway or not, but mostly they get reimbursed?
We know if they're skiway or not, if they're skiway or not, I do not, if they're skiway, I do not pay them, I bill, uh, the skiway.
Okay.
And they pay them, um, or I pay them and then the skiway pays us, either or. Um, those two are not, and the two people are being billed.
Okay.
They, by us.
And, and mostly, we, I know in the old days, sometimes collecting, especially from the skiway, but, uh, we didn't use to build the skiway, we used to bill the individual, and we often didn't get reimbursed, you know.
Right, the, the billing company for the ambulance bills the person three times first, so, it doesn't come to, come to us until after they've done that. So generally, we like to think that the money goes to them first, within those three bills.
Okay.
Have we had assistant town auditors before?
Have we yet? We always do.
And they're appointed?
Yeah. Yes.
Good idea.
It is. So does that answer your question, Judy?
He's himself.
So we don't have a big problem usually collecting, is what I'm.
No, well, it's a challenge, yeah.
Okay.
Just depends on the person, especially if they live in town or not. If they live in town, they tend to be more receptive. And, if they don't, they sort of don't understand why they're getting billed.
Yeah.
But, it, it, and it sometimes takes until we send them a letter that says they're gonna go to Small Things Board, and they usually pay attention. Anything else on the desk, there are Dina questions, okay, good. Um, I wanted to report that the Conservation Commission approved the money, I'm not stealing your thunder, but, um, the grant will be sent off to the state for the mill foil.
So we are fully covered as far as no amount to be raised?
Correct. Cause we don't have to ask the taxpayers for any money. Thank you, Conservation Commission. There's a letter here for you guys to read, not for the meeting, but for after. And I have a couple of, um, things from Little Town Meeting, which I'm sure we'll do in that. The only one other thing I had, which I forgot when David was here, darn it, this is the application for the permit for that section of the road that we had done, and of course, you know, I just sent it in. Um, and DES politely sent me a letter back saying that it's bad form, I didn't have everything I needed. So I actually talked with David, I had him look at this, and I'm like, yeah. So, um, if the board is willing, David is willing to look at this, take it on and see what I'm missing, and address it, because he's good at that, I'm not.
Well, one of, one of the things we've, I think, and we can reinforce if you want, is that we've already asked David to basically become our subject matter expert for permitting, which kind of gets me back to what Dennis was saying. In that, depending on the outcome of Tuesday night, if River Road North at first starts up, we need to remember that the.
Start permitting, excuse me. Start permitting quick.
Exactly, and it's, and it's, the Corps of Engineers are gonna do the federal aspect of it, so we're gonna need their design, um, for us to start the permitting process on our side with David. And I'm, it'll be interesting to see how well we can do internally without, it, it's gonna be big.
That one is gonna be.
It, it's gonna be a lot of work.
And this one got sent in just because mainly it was all, um, it was all done, it was all there. It had been engineered, there were plans, everything was done, the permit was filled out, so of course I just assumed everything was there, well, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight things, that. So anyways, so if you guys are okay, David's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good.
That would be great.
No, I, I, can I ask a couple of comments?
Yeah. So Dina, I.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I was hoping you could finish up your.
Other than my non-public, I think I'm also.
Okay.
Sir. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments?
Yes. First off, I want to say, I'm very pleased with the town's response to COVID nineteen. This is exactly what you should be doing, you should be, I mean, in the face of this uncertainty, you should be saying, this is what we know, we're thinking about this stuff, we're trying to figure out what, what we're gonna do. Thank you. That's good. I also appreciate your, today's decision to post meeting changes and all on the list, cause you're right Ben, not everybody reads the town website every day. Nobody will ever read the town's website every day, as, as hard as you work to make it good.
Especially difficult when we get a sudden change.
Yeah, right.
If you're anticipating it, then nobody really can, paying attention wants to come in anyway, so.
And so, yes, I strongly support putting just a short note, planning board meeting, uh, so, in this case, select board meeting, special meeting on Monday, see the website for details.
And the link, the automatic link, really, will make it work and get people paying attention. And a note says, please join the website.
It's actually, yes.
With a smiley face.
Of everyone that goes out, it actually has.
Right. Good, and in fact, uh, I've mentioned this to David, I wouldn't even mention it to you, it's under control, I'm sure. And now, the real reason for me coming in, I have a question, that, it's a simple question, but I don't know if it's an easy answer. Can a committee member announce their can, their candidacy on the listserv? So, could I, as an alternate of a planning board, announce a short position statement on the list?
I, I think I can answer that.
Okay.
Perhaps not a hundred percent legally, but, what traditionally has been done is, that gets posted on the website, and you can go to the listserv and say, "Please see the website for my position statement or my candidacy statement."
Ah, okay, so.
Which we could, which, which we could ask Patty, um, tomorrow to, cause she sent out a note on the listserv that said, hey, if you want to get, um, your.
Bio.
Bio, yeah, of what, you know.
Which I've done, it's, it's already there.
It's here, yeah.
But then, but then we, we could actually, in, with coordination with Dina, basically say, hey, these people that are running have populated, and here's the link again.
And I think we've done that in past years.
Well, we have a whole list, I think, of things that need to go out on the listserv to remind people to go look at the web on, and we could add that to it.
But also, I think it, we could, but.
With respect to town meeting, you mean?
I believe as an individual that you could do that.
Is that, does that make sense to you?
But I don't know.
Can I ask you, your question is because you're already on the planning board, correct?
That's right, if I, if I were John Public.
Right.
I just moved to town, and I say, hey, I wanna, you know.
That's, that's an easy one.
Okay.
That's an easy yes, okay. The, 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 the little bit of gray area would be, let's say, let's take a different, um, I'm there, I'm in position, would I, would you be comfortable of a elected person going to the listserv saying, "Please vote for me"?
I think what they say is, please go to the website, da, 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 da.
Okay, but then here's, here's the gray area, here's an alternate.
Well, just, just, just flushing it out.
Alright. So, so now you got an alternate who wasn't necessarily elected, but nominated by the board, right? So it's a little bit gray, but I guess, I guess my thoughts would be in terms of the question, I don't know if there's any necessarily town, um, policy that specific. But it, it sounds like that, sort of, since you do work actively on the board, probably sticking to what I would do if I was going to, running in next year. Would be to do it as we talk, where we could point people, we say we've populated, we could get with Patricia, Patty Chex, and get her say, okay, do we have everybody's letters in? Can we one more time, push out, that here's the link to the, on the website, the town website, where people have put their position papers or whatever you want to call them. How's that? Thanks. So that's, yes to both, that I could send a note that says, my position's on the town website.
Yeah, I think you've just got to be careful. Freedom of speech, you know? You don't want to squelch him and say, you know, you can't do that.
Yeah, I think he can do what he says.
I have no problem with him doing that.
Or you.
You do?
I don't have any problem.
He's not putting the thing on it.
He's not putting a paper out there and saying, go to the website.
Okay, so I just want to get the square in my mind. So maybe on this book, so let, so, next year, if I was to come to you and say, I want to put my bio out on the list, sir, you'd be okay?
No, but what we said is...
No, you could say, go to the town website and read my bio.
You could go to the list, sir, and say, Kevin here, I am running for another term. Please go to the website and see.
And just, you can put a link button in there and let them click it.
Is that the same advice we're giving Rich?
I thought it was.
Okay. Well, when you started talking about freedom of speech, I thought maybe I had taken too far of the position. But I think what I've heard is, is that...
I, yeah.
Go ahead, Dina.
Well, I was just going to say, we have to remember that people, whether they're elected or appointed, are citizens of the town line, and they should have the right to freedom of speech. I'm an employee, I don't have that right. I mean, I do to a point, but it's, you know, it's a little different.
No, it should be equal for everybody, regardless of who's signing.
So you just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying to figure out how to sign up for news and announcements.
Yeah, hold it, hang on, ma'am. Let's finish where we're at, because I'm not sure we got closure. He asked a question, I'm asking the board, what's the, what's the answer, what's the advice?
The advice is, make sure it's on the website, so through Patty or whoever. And two, he may go to the list, sir, and say, I'm running, check the website. Okay.
How's that? That's true. Okay, what else? Any other public comments?
But thank you for checking, appreciate that.
Well, I made a very solemn promise to the planning board last year, about a year ago, that I would be very respectful of policy, and I just don't want to not be respectful, so.
Very good.
Thank you. That's it. That's it for me.
Thanks.
I don't know if you're done.
So who had something?
I just tried to sign up for news and announcements, I thought I had before, but I can't figure out how to do it. I can't find it anywhere.
There's a...
It's way on the bottom.
On the very homepage.
Yeah, the homepage way on the bottom.
Maybe you can work it offline. They got no money. You guys keep going. Thank you.
I'll give instructions. No, I'm going to send out.
Okay. Matters arising, new business. The one thing I was trying to remember previously, David, when we put the agenda, was just to make sure that the board was aware of what's going on with respect to the EOC and Margaret and our response. Anyone else? Matters arising, new business? Review Little Town Meeting. I guess what I'd like to do is get your thoughts on, realistically, what adjustments we...
We can see it. Okay, then you had an action item to either bring to town meeting, or now that we have a website, to put on the website. The discussions did not occur the way they have in recent years. And what you've, what I've found is that your Little Town Meeting becomes a town meeting, and then you repeat it all.
Right.
Usually with the same people.
Right.
At town meeting, so it does begin to seem...
Like you're double dipping, or...
Yeah, it's kind of lengthy, and...
Are they, the warrant articles after anything that's controversial, or... There certainly was an exodus as soon as we got done talking about anything.
Yeah.
The high interest area.
Yeah. Yeah.
The meeting left.
And I'm not sure there was, from my point, we had responses, but I'm not sure there was anything...
I don't know if we could...
Much that we needed to provide more of, because they weren't really looking for absent material. They wanted to express opinions.
I'm just curious, I mean, it's really the moderators, you know, I mean, Kevin's done it long enough that he had a feel for...
Tried to keep it on.
But I just, I was just trying to learn from myself.
Yeah.
You know, because I had feedback, I had feedback afterwards, that was like, why did you spend any time?
On any of this?
On any of that, because isn't that supposed to be with town meeting? And so I didn't really know what the historical, you know...
Historically, it was very...
It'll get rehearsed at town meeting.
It will get, but historically, it was really to try and point to some place that, to give the selectmen a week to find information to further clarify.
I was going to say, that was...
The paper you handed out was good, I saw a lot of people reading it during the meeting.
I think Judy's point is exactly what is best benefit for a little town meeting, other than discussing planning and zoning stuff that you can't do that day, is that any additional information that you may need to get ready and come up and look up and figure out and have for town meeting, and that's usually very helpful.
Okay, oh, that helps me, good.
Now, one other thing, you know, if we have, we know there's going to be articles that are, there's going to be a lot of talk on. Might be a good idea to load them up in the beginning of the meeting, move the rest of the meeting. Let the rest of the meeting move along quickly, which it would have.
Yeah.
People are waiting to speak for Article 16.
Right. Is that's not, it's...
That would come from the floor.
That would come from the floor, kind of being...
Somebody would make a motion to move it out of order, yeah, just take it first.
Oh, very first thing should be the fire station.
Because we know it's going to generate discussion.
Right.
I guess that's a combination of the moderator and the floor. Decision, as far as moving discussion around.
Right.
Okay, so the next agenda item was to talk about town meeting. In preparation for that, I started something that looks like this. You know, I like pictures.
I don't either. They all look the same.
They all look the same. Come on, Ben, some have more color than others. So basically, what I labeled it was 2002 question and answer for marriage town meeting. In a way, you could call them speaker's notes, select board's notes. And so, you know, we've got our assignments for all the articles. And so what I started to do is to populate a lot of what I got stored in my head, but sometimes in the moment, you don't necessarily remember.
Yeah.
And so, if you would like, once I finish later on today, the articles that I'm responsible for, I can forward this to Dina, and she can send it out to you, and then you can populate it. The other thing that it does is it lets you see each one of us, you know, I've only got, like, for some things, like for example, the CRF, I mean, all I did was say, funding remains healthy at 425, and then brackets, although 7% less than 2019. I mean, I thought that's, you know, something that if it comes up, at least I know, okay, that's 7% less than 2019, in case someone asked, you know, when we went from 459 to 404. So even though that's Judy's thing, you can add whatever bullet...
No, those are, those are good, because rather than stumbling over looking for...
Pieces of paper.
Judy has so much paper in front of her that...
She works well from paper.
I know, she does, it's very good.
These are really meant for us, and it's really meant for the individuals, so you can, you can do as much or as little as you think you want. And then when it's all done, feed them back to Dina, so that on Monday, all three of us will see the collective sheet, and then we're basically, save the jokes, all on the same page. Okay, so I'll do that. I'll send my draft, I'll send my draft out no later than early tomorrow morning. Okay? I just, when I saw it on the agenda today, I started thinking about, you know, what would be helpful.
And we did have assignments, so...
Yeah, no, that's, and that, we can actually put them, I could put them on this to double, re-refresh, if you will. I could put article, you know, for the budget for Article 4, or whatever, Kevin, that's helped, you know, but...
Oh, no, I...
Whatever.
You can. We can, handwrite it. But for setup, I was the...
That's next.
Okay.
Can I say a couple of things? Do you not want to hear my opinions?
Oh. For Little Town Meeting?
I just have a few things that I picked up on in the audience and listening to people, that I think you guys need to clarify better.
Go ahead.
One is that the police cruiser is being paid for out of the capital reserve fund. It's clear to me there are a few people who think that money has been taken out of the operating budget and is being used to pay off the police cruiser.
Good point.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. I would not have...
That was one thing, well, I was very surprised anyways. And there's even a list, sir, message on that, too. The 250 truck needs to be made clear, that is not a highway department truck, but that is our maintenance department's truck. And even if in the future it get used for plowing, it's still not a highway truck. It's a maintenance truck.
I was going to add, it came up, but the truck was, we selected it because the, an F-150 was the same price as the F-250. And that gave us more versatility in the future.
Right.
And we're not going to get into a discussion of what make, whether it's...
No, and actually, right, right, right. And the warranty and all that, the 250 is covered more because of the plow, it's ready for the plow and all that stuff.
And it comes with a chainsaw.
And it comes with a chainsaw, and a whipper, and all kinds of good stuff. Okay, and now it's the candidates. Oh, and then the other thing is that I know, through the grapevine, that you're going to get a lot of questions on the beach. And why is the money missing, and blah, blah, blah. And what is, what is going to be the plan this year? So, I don't know if it would be who you two write a little synopsis that we can put on the web, along with the other budget stuff that we're going to put on the web?
So, on this, I basically, you know, I've got where we, cut and paste from where we had cost reductions. So under the beach, you know, I said eliminate beach lifeguards and beach supervisor, beach is still open, swim at your risk, pond learned to swim program remains, so those are the talking points.
Right.
So that's a place where you could capture it. Dean is actually driving to another question or another action item. We said that we would post the draft replacement schedule, where people could find it. Well, how, what's your plans for that? Where are you going to, where is that going to live, this piece of paper here?
Well, I thought after today's meeting, we'll get whatever info together. And David is going to, I will ask him to post on the webpage. And he can do a new green bar at the top that will say, you know, I don't know, information from Little Town Meeting, or additional information for town meeting, or whatever. And then it'll all be right there, and then when I write on the list, sir, I'll say, you know, go to the...
Page.
To the homepage, left side, green bar.
Put this link.
Yeah, okay, so I'm with you on that, because we did promise, we did promise folks the...
The maintenance, replacement.
Replacement schedule, right. I'm not, I'm not, the only other thing, what else do you think would go there? You've already talked about the pond program, what are the beach program, what do you want to call it? What else would you think would go there?
From the meeting, well, I just think any additional information you can get out to clarify any questions is good.
So, well, let's see.
We could, we could, I'm going to push back, instead of pushing back and stretching. We could pop, we could, we could spend days populating that. I'm not sure how to pick and choose.
You've got that many questions. I mean, it's really the police cruiser, the truck, the beach.
But did, remind me, did, did the beach even come up at the meeting?
The beach did not come up.
No, it didn't.
Came up afterwards.
But it came up about 20 people after.
And it was...
I spoke to somebody on the way out.
On the list, sir.
So I get it, it's a high, it's a high visible, high, you know, so, so maybe that's one other thing. But I, there's a whole bunch we could put out, I mean, we could, you know, we could put the report from the Corps of Engineers for the rebuilding of North Eutford. I mean, to me, you know, reading, reading that to get informed, because I, my critique of myself, you know, we're asking for $560,000, but I didn't really, we're asking for 200 of that, but I didn't really spend much time, possibly because of the difference between Little Town Meeting and Big Town Meeting, explaining why we wanted to have that project. So, all I'm suggesting is there's a lot we could populate ahead of time.
Yeah, I think we've done that, though, pretty much, I mean...
Well, I don't think anyone's, I don't think very few people are aware of what the Corps of Engineers has put together to put a summary of, for that project.
Well, they're either going to ask or not, and...
And I don't think they're interested, really.
No. There's one guy, one guy, one guy, and he'll come in and look at the plan.
Yeah, so we've got high, high interest on the, you know...
Well, let's not make this more complicated than need be.
All we need on the, all we need on the beaches to be able to get a couple, you know, short explanations of why we came to our decision.
I don't even think you need that. No, wait, wait, wait. Wait, what I'm hearing more of...
No, no, I'm talking about when they ask questions.
But, well, what I'm, what I'm talking more of is people need to hear that the beach is still going to be open.
Right.
That it's still going to be available for them to use, and that the pond program is still going to go on. They may not like the idea that there's no lifeguards, but they, they don't even know that.
That's all right.
And when we get, when we get to, it is going, it's not on a website, Dina. But when we get to town meeting, and we have the more detailed discussions on the OpEx, that's exactly where we're going to capture that. And that's what I was suggesting with these bullets, to take on board the things. I'm reluctant to put out something onto the list, sir, that says, here's all the talking points that we sort of learned.
Well, that's not what I meant, but that's okay. I just, here's, here was my only idea about that, was that what happens is then, then the operating budget comes up, and then all of a sudden, somebody stands up and says, I want to put $15,000 back in the budget because I want lifeguards. And then it turns into this, because, because I want lifeguards, because I want to be able to use the beach. And it's because they don't understand that they still can use the beach. And then it turns into a lengthy, huge discussion.
Sure.
Which is fine, I'm just...
No, it's going to happen.
Trying to get, I thought would be beneficial.
But then, I know you're trying to put out information ahead of time that would inform people, so to minimize that amount of extra time. But the thing is, we should do, then we got to do the same thing for discontinuing River Road. Same, the logic holds.
Except that was brought up and discussed, and the beach wasn't even brought up.
But there's going to be new people, I, all I'm, all I think is, I think the one, my view is that this needs to get posted because it was requested.
Absolutely.
It's hard to disseminate that information in words and in a big audience. And all the other things, you know, we'll do our best to capture all these bullets, because they're important. I mean, the beach is still open, I think is a really, really important thing, that people, you know, if you're not aware, or you're just reading off the list, sir, your first read is, gee.
Can't go to the beach?
Can't go to the beach anymore.
I will just send the info to Mr. Herschler, who requested it. And if he chooses to put it on the list, sir, well, then, there you go. He can do that.
Yeah, let's, let's do it that way.
Thanks.
He's the one who's really...
I, well, just as we'd address any other thing like this, I think the, you know, the feedback from the board through Dina to the one individuals to let them know we're listening. But it helps us to think about, what do we need to emphasize at town meeting? Because it gives us a feel of what's going to be important to be discussed.
And what I sent you in the email was okay?
It's for me.
That is your, you're going to put the ropes out?
Yep.
No docks, no float?
We're going to put the ropes out, we may put the docks out, we will not have a float. And we haven't had a conversation about that. And it's pack in, pack out, it will be posted for someone at your own risk. There will be some clay equipment there, which is...
Have you, have you seen?
That's the rep commission.
The recreation.
That's all the rest of it is.
But that enhances the beach area, as a recreation area.
Do you want to, I'm more than glad to have you work with Dina to, if you want to embellish Dina's response?
Okay.
Just, just so that if it does end up with wide distribution, it gets all the things, all the points that you want? It's up to you.
I'm just sending it to Russell.
I know, I know.
He's the only one.
I know, I know. I'm happy with this, or if you want to make it, if you want to adjust it, Judy, fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll have a look at it, Dina. I...
Let's move.
Yeah, let's move.
You can, you can do that offline. I'm happy, happy with whatever you come up with.
All right.
Any other things prepping for town meeting?
Setup.
Setup.
Monday night, five o'clock?
That's sort of the traditional.
Takes about a half an hour usually.
Maybe a little bit longer, you know, with the boos and then a little bit adjustment with the moderator's adjustments once he arrives. He's, oh, by the way, before I forget, he's adamant that the, when we go to take down, he's adamant that the barrier that we put up, the rope barrier stays in place so that the vote counter people don't get disturbed. So, just remind me in my anxiousness to get everything put away, then I leave that up until the loading count has been completed. So, yeah, so five o'clock would be good. Ben, we're gonna bank on your projector.
Yep, you like it?
Oh, it's a great projector, yeah. Should we send whatever we think we might project to Ben so that it's on his machine? So that your clicker works, so we don't have to go through? 'Cause we had, we had little clicker advancement challenges. Five and a half years engineering school down the drain, couldn't figure it out.
See, see, welcome to my world and I have a turning.
Somebody has a, my pointer will only stay on so long if it's not used and shuts off.
So, somebody has to keep.
Repress the two buttons to recharge it or get it back on.
I don't anticipate, almost like Little Town Meeting, I think, once those eight slides are completed, I don't anticipate us needing a lot of things pulled up unless there's something we have to really go dig for, try to project.
Well, I'm sure, sure you how to use that anyway.
Well, remember though, I couldn't get it to connect to my machine to talk.
Yeah, no, but this will.
Right. So, the action items, if you, so I'll basically make sure that Ben has the most recent presentation, because there was an error. I know I don't make many, but there was an error in the slides for the fire hall. I think it's on this one, but anyways.
Just call town and slide down.
Okay, something simple. Okay, I fixed, I fixed it. But it's, let me see your, let me see your handout.
Oh, that is not from the handout.
No, 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 yeah, it's from the slide deck. One three nine five, not one four nine five. One point four million, not one point five. Oops.
We've been carrying that number for a while.
Yeah, how come you didn't catch it previously?
'Cause I was pretty sure I heard him say that.
But anyways, he corrected me, he corrected me this morning or last night. And the, the number he wants is one four, so basically it's four hundred thousand dollars on the CRF, five hundred thousand dollars in fundraising and five hundred thousand dollars funded for the seven years. The total two point four.
Okay, yeah.
So, I know Judy, that was, that was the confusion, 'cause that number had come out before too.
Yeah.
But if you, but if you take all my, if you take all of our numbers.
Yeah, you come up to one four.
Either, either he's gotta build it for less or we gotta come up with more money.
Well, we've been around that table a few times.
You're gonna set up at five?
Yep.
Set up at five, and then we had talked about different, Ben, you had said that you were gonna be there at the end of the day because Deb is gonna be counting, so you'd be there with her.
For town meeting day?
For town meeting day, so you'd be there around six or seven?
I, things are complicated right now, just 'cause we're boiling sap.
Oh, okay, so.
Everything broke loose yesterday.
That nice warm day?
Yeah, we had three thousand gallons of sap come off the hill in the first boil. We had to set everything up.
So, so generally speaking, for that operation, besides you having to be there all the time, is there any, is there?
No, I can, I, it, it, it depends on my nephew and my brother boil, but if, if they are boiling, I have, still have to package the syrup and get it in barrels and stuff like that.
So, is there a part of the day that works better for you? I think what Judy and I.
It may be, it may end up being early part of the day.
Is when you're available or not available?
Would be most available, 'cause we tend to boil in the afternoon. But I'll let you know.
Okay.
When the weather, weather might go for cold and not, you're gonna have to worry about it.
So, how about, how about we plan on that I'm there to kick off voting at seven AM? We've all gotta be there at nine. And then if your, your morning is more free, well, we're all there, we're all there, we're all there till one or two.
Yeah, and then if you need, I can, that'll be afternoon, you'll be leaving there.
So, then if you need to scoot home in the afternoon, between Judy and I will cover. One of us for sure has to be there when polls close, all the way through the end of the ballots being counted. That's, that's, that's with it.
I did that before, I mean, I can do that again, but.
I ended up with Little Town, he saw me texting, but my nephew was trying to get the RO started and things weren't working, and I was diagnostic and telling him what to do. But we gotta.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to basically kinda share that responsibility.
We'll figure it out. I, depending on how many people sign up to count, Kevin is hoping not to have anyone that's running for anything, but if he comes up short, I will do counting of something that is not.
He wanted me there actually, so that's, that's why it may turn out that it's just easier for me to stay.
Okay.
You know, so maybe what we'll do is just plan on you having the afternoon, you know, when town meeting finishes, I can go home and get my power nap. And then, you know, come seven o'clock, I'll come back and spell you. How's that?
Okay, yeah, you can take down the, you can count, I'll take down the doodads.
And then, yeah, that's, speaking of taking down the doodads.
Doodles.
Can we have Matt help?
He's all ready for Monday night.
What about, what about, what about seven o'clock Tuesday?
To take things down?
Mm-hmm. That would be helpful. So, very grateful he had at the primary, which was wonderful.
Well, he was gonna be there, but Patty told him not to, 'cause she said there weren't enough people.
I'd rather, I'd rather have him there, just, just so that, just in case.
Yep.
If, if it turns out that everyone, for whatever reason, is not there, then, and other people are doing other things, I think it's.
Yeah, what usually happened, what happened at the primary and what will happen at town meeting is everyone goes over and counts the ballots and you've got all this stuff left and Judy is.
Well, my concern was that, yeah, I said to Matt, oh, you're gonna be there. Well, of course, that's at ten o'clock at night, you know, I worry about that, Patty having to carry everything back over here and lug it all, but he's not gonna be there at ten o'clock at night.
No, but he can get.
But at seven to take care of everything.
Take everything down, and if there is stuff that can be carried, you can carry it.
I did say to him, make, make sure you carry it. And I told Patty, but you know.
She'll do nothing.
She will.
Or maybe, you know, to help her, if she can, is to wait till the next morning to unpack and then early in the morning, Matt can help her bring everything from her car in.
Sure.
If she can wait that long.
Sure.
I had a hard time talking her into that too.
She's an independent woman. We love it.
Okay, what else? So, basically, I've got, I've gotta be there at opening.
Seven o'clock, yeah.
We're all gonna be.
We're all there at nine.
Make sure they're early enough then to set up your machine and the projector.
That starts at nine?
Nine.
I'll be there at eight, okay.
Sorry.
I have some of those lethal cough drops if you want one.
I think I'll take one, sure. Thank you.
They're exploding right now.
I'll just take it out, give it a rest for a minute. Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
That reminds me of, that, that was one more of the new business things, that now that Dina's had a slave cough.
Coughing fit.
You know, so what are the recommendations for the control of viruses? To make sure that people stay home when they're sick and that their children are home to stay home? Should we, do we need to, we, we actually have a very, very, I don't wanna use, I don't wanna say good either. We've got a sick leave policy that's allows for a lot of sick days. Should we put into the paychecks just a little note reinforcing or re, let people know that if you're sick, please stay home? Is that, is that, there's actually some communities, some towns, some businesses that are doing exactly that. We could wait till next week to do it, if you thought that was the right timing. Dina, your thoughts? You look like you're about to say something.
Well, I was just gonna say that I would hope that most of the supervisors are on the ball. I had somebody in here yesterday morning who showed up for work sick. I sent him home. I said, sorry, you can't stay, go. We love you, but get out.
Right, right.
I, I would agree with what you said, but I think in this particular instance, it probably wouldn't hurt to stick a note in.
Oh, no, I think that would be great.
In the pay envelope saying, please stay home if you're sick.
Just a little encouragement.
And if your children are home, if your children are sick, please, if you have to stay home with them.
Stay home with them.
Stay home with them.
Right, absolutely.
Don't bring any germs in here. I don't care if it's the flu or.
I mean, I think that, you know, from the parent's perspective, they're gonna hear the same thing from the school with their children and that.
Right.
But as far as town policy goes, if you will, I think reinforcing the fact that, and it's, if you may say, it's easy for us to say and do because we've got a part of our policy. It's a lot harder for businesses that don't have paid sick days.
Exactly.
Right, or they have three for the year.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's a lot harder to manage, so, okay, so Dina, you're.
Yep, I'll stick something in.
You okay with that, Ben?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thanks.
And we've got a call at eleven, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, anytime between now and eleven.
Yeah, give me just a, give me just a second. Give me just.
I didn't realize it was quite so close to eleven.
Right. And then eleven thirty, Chief Mondays coming back in, or coming in.
Not today.
Oh, I thought he was coming in, oh, next Thursday.
After town meeting, yes.
Oh, next Thursday, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Do you not, would you like the agenda, sir?
Hey.
Maybe.
Smart, smart aleck remarks are left for me.
I wasn't being smart, I'm being serious.
Committees and commissioner reports.
Incidentally, I did get compliments on your presentation. Thought you were articulate.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dina.
Well, I had on there some grants, but.
Oh, we need to talk about those.
We can't, the energy committee one, it's five thousand dollars, well, it's up to five thousand dollars. So, you need to have a public hearing to accept it anyways, so you can't, you can't react to it until you do that.
Okay, so we need to put that out on the agenda, how much time for a public hearing ahead of time?
I will set that up.
Is there?
It has to be a seven day notice, including the day of the meeting or the day.
So, now we're two weeks out.
So, now it will be not next Thursday, but the next.
Same, same for the Line Foundation?
Yep, yep.
So, let's do those both the same day?
Yes.
So, we don't have to talk about accepting them specifically, but with the Line Foundation, just for your awareness, they granted us a little less than half of what's required to do the project.
For the crosswalk?
R, RFB.
Okay.
So, we're challenged. The, I think the important part is going to be, once again, linking it to the paving that's going on on Route Ten and getting the design and the state approval, and if we have to in 2020, if we have to physically install the structures in 2021, 'cause we don't have the funding, then at least we've got everything ready to go.
Ready to go, yeah.
But we can definitely have a little bit more detailed discussion on that in two weeks. So, we've got those two things, right, Dina?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the highway boiler, boiler, Morty came with his.
Yeah, we've got two now.
Got two, two wood boiler prices?
Yep.
Mr. Bailey's, did it include the wall? And the other one did not, as I remember.
Correct, I'm under. And, and also, we haven't gotten the BTU conversions either, so.
That's still work in progress.
Let's wait till next week.
Well, that's still work in progress, and, and, you know, the, the, the good news is, is warming up and also, you know, they're, they're working and barely limping along, so we're gonna have to fix that one today.
Yep, okay.
All right, committee commissioner reports?
Oh, no, it isn't. You need to sign, you need to approve the auditor, sorry, the auditor's contract commitment. There's a place to sign. It's that shawna bouquet, same one we've used all along.
Are the prices in there?
Yeah, fourteen thousand dollars is the most, not, not to exceed. And it general, generally isn't that much. And it does have the chair of the boards, one signature place, but you guys can certainly all sign if you want. It's a.
Chair, it's a chair sign.
I'm so surprised that companies that work with municipalities haven't figured out that there's supposed to be more than one signature. I mean, it's just, how many years have they worked for this?
Yeah, well.
That's fine.
One or two, since I did, all those years.
Well, we could do all three.
Yeah.
Sorry, but the board's comfortable, the board's comfortable with fourteen thousand dollars for the auditor.
Sounds like you guys.
Sure, perfect.
Is that standard? It used to be a lot less.
It did, yes.
We all used to be a lot younger.
I think this year it was twelve or twelve something. And I think last year the letter was fourteen. It's been the same for a while.
A couple of years, okay.
Yeah, and then we don't usually use. And it also depends on if they do every several years, they have to do a big GFOA and they have to track one person through the whole year.
Oh, good lord.
It costs more money. It's kinda like a assessing update, you know? Like every five years, you have to spend more money than you normally do.
Unless you're Hannah, where you then you get to do it extra.
You get to do.
Those poor guys.
Dean, I think for that streetlight conversion grant from the Line Foundation, I think we need to get someone from the energy committee, like Mark, to come in and present at the same time for that public meeting.
Well, I think somebody from the energy committee should be here.
Yep.
Absolutely. Well, they've already asked for the grant, they've already gotten the money, they're just gonna accept it.
Well.
But.
I, I think as the questions arise, I think.
It has a good explanation in here. Yeah, no, someone should be here.
Mark had, I mean, that's.
Someone should be. Well, I like to do that, 'cause then they know what the expectation is from my office too, because.
As far as timing goes?
Uh, timing, tracking, who gets what, where everything goes, because we have a problem with that.
Right. Committee commissioner reports, any?
No.
Unfortunate that David came in and updated you guys on the client board.
There you go, you just sat center.
Ben, did you, did you have a concert, it sounds like, looks like there was conservation on Monday.
Yeah, I've got the miniature here, I didn't attend.
Curious as you fish for that. Did they talk about River Road by-pass? RE trails?
Sue was there.
Well, I'd like to hear it from you.
Well, I thought it was five minutes.
So.
Observation.
Oh, you're gonna call Laura?
I know, I know.
Well, it's eleven o'clock.
I'm trying to get there. I'm, as soon as we finish this, we'll be going to the demo, just for your awareness. And as best I know, that will finish our business for the day. Best I know right now. Thank you.
I sure, I sure saw those, and I have found ones that he's sent for past meetings.
Just off the top of your head though, do you remember?
I wasn't there.
Oh.
I wasn't there, I wasn't there, so I have to read the minutes.
Oh.
But I know that Rusty and Sue gave the presentation through.
Right, I read them.
You read the minutes?
I read them, yes, sir, I did.
Yeah, I, I have them.
Well, fine.
I don't know why they're not.
All I really, then, all I really would ask is that you send them to Judy and I.
All right.
About the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then what, then I'll, then I'll answer my question.
Okay, excellent.
And then we'll all be informed.
That'd be so good.
Okay, so good. Okay, well, let's take a few minute break and the public can take down.